Okay, at this point in time, we're going to start the meeting. Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They are now. And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Emeritus Horace Ferguson from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. And I must say something about Horace. First of all, glad to have you back. Secondly, he's often mistaken for the mayor. Unfortunately, I'm never mistaken for a pastor. So, Horace, come on down.
We're not even going to say anything.
No, don't. It's true.
I don't have a quick line for as many things as you, Dick.
I hear ya.
You have a distinguishing factor there as well. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, let us pray. Come, Holy Spirit, heavenly dove, with all of thy quickening powers, renew afresh that flame of sacred love with these humbled and waiting hearts and minds of ours. Now assembled in this place tonight, please allow your presence, oh God, to sway this meeting, that the needs of this community may be graciously and faithfully served, that our vision and reasoning may be raised above all barriers dividing and splintering us from one another. Thy presence would guide us, that presence which prompts wisdom to honorably deal with all citizens and related town issues. That dynamic presence allowing us to serve rather than seeking to be served. Awake, oh Lord, in each of us, the desire to seek Your way in serving You and all within the Holly Springs community. For You be honor and glory, power and dominion forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I think you have a lacrosse game to go to tonight. Am I correct?
Yes.
You have a lacrosse game to go to tonight?
Yep.
You playing? Are you playing?
I have three Swenson's play.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for coming in the middle of that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pastor.
I remember for our adjustment approval, the April 7th, 2015 meeting agenda.
I'm sorry, I have to go.
It's got an amendment on it, doesn't it?
Yes, it's taken one item off the dissonance.
All right.
Thank you all.
Not a problem. Like I said, we're firm but flexible.
It's got to be tonight, that's for sure.
Kevin's for wireless keyboards.
There you go.
Motion to adopt the April 7th meeting agenda with the following changes. Item 8H, plan approval expiration extension for New Hill Apartments being removed and the rest remaining the same.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number five is public comment period. And Lynn, do me a favor. Would you go back and see if there's a blue sheet back there for me?
There isn't.
There isn't?
No.
Thank you, Lynn. So, at this point in time, we'll open and close the public hearing and go right to one of my favorites. Agenda item 6A, special recognition, 11 to 12 girls All-Star basketball team wins SWAC State Tournament. Kristen Denton and Adam Hoffman.
Oh.
Testing.
Tonight, we're recognizing our 11-12 girls All-Star basketball team. As the mayor said, they are SWAC State Champions. They competed in March in the SWAC sectional and state basketball tournaments. During the sectional tournament, Holly Springs played against teams from Person County, Knightdale, Randolph County, Wake Forest, and Lee County, finishing runner-up to Person County with a record of 4-2, earning a chance to play in the state tournament. At the state tournament, the All-Stars competed against teams from Person County, Onslow County, and the Sand Hills. With a record of 3-1, Holly Springs All-Stars defeated Person County in a buzzer-beater championship to become the SWAC State Champions.
A buzzer beater.
And it literally was. We have a clip on our Facebook page if you want to check it out.
I gotta do that.
Yeah. And just to point out, the snow and icy weather really put a dent in our season this year. And because of that, the All-Star teams were formed very late and they had very little practice. So, this is a great honor for them to be able to do that with those obstacles. So, we'd like to call up the team and recognize them. I'd like to thank head coach Mindy Gagliardi and assistant coach Mike Kelsey for volunteering their time. If you guys want to come on up. And we'll recognize the girls individually. And our Parks and Rec Assistant Director, Adam Huffman, is going to be presenting these certificates to you players. And when I call your names, you'll come up and stay up and we'll take a picture after. Madison Fauntleroy.
Yay. Look at that medal.
And Reina Drake.
Now, for those who'd like to take pictures, come on down the aisle a little bit, please. It's good gin. Oh, I'm exhausted.
Thank you.
Tough job, tough job. Thank you again, ladies.
Because my daughter had the pleasure of losing to them twice this season. So, they were a very, very good team.
It must be great.
Yep.
Okay. Agenda items 7A and Request Communication, Triangle Transit Authority, Kendra Parrish and Tim Gardner. I recognize that guy. Hi, Tim.
As you may recall, it's been a few years, and Tim will go over the initial Wake County Transit Plan was underway. And the town of Holly Springs, as well as the other municipalities in Wake County, had participated in looking at that plan. And as you know, Holly Springs, there's not a rail line. But basically, the main line that was going from Chapel Hill, Durham, through Cary, Raleigh, over to Garner, that was sort of the main line that was being looked at. And what we always tried to make sure is that Holly Springs had at least bus service to be able to get to RTP and to get to downtown Raleigh, to get to those, you know, whether it be commuter or whatever that was going to be up above us, we wanted to make sure that we were able to make it to that line. That was in the original Wake County Transit Plan, and that provided a good foundation for what was to come. And so, what Tim's going to talk to you about is sort of where we're at now with the Investment Strategy Report. And the mayor and I attend those meetings. And we also have a resident, Mr. Briggs, that also attends those. He's from the Portland, Seattle-type area and has used transit and is very interested. So, that's our participation. And as we continue through this, we'll bring back to you and probably have some other public meetings and get some public input on this.
Good.
And with that, I'll let Tim go through his PowerPoint.
Welcome, Tim.
I think it's next, I'm not sure. There you go. All right. So, thank you for the introduction. And I think we're definitely in agreement with what Kendra has said here. The reason I'm here tonight is essentially, we have released the Transit Choices Report. Released it in January, and we wanted to go around to each of the communities and definitely give a presentation to everyone on what it was doing and what part of the process is that and why this process is going to be different, and ask for you to get engaged in the process as we move forward. So, what I'm going to cover today is the key differences between the Wake County Transit Investment Strategy and the draft plan or the original plan that Kendra referenced. We're going to introduce how we're approaching it with our Transit Choices document, which is essentially getting to the end of that process right now, but we're still in it. And then, we're going to talk about how we're going to be setting the future direction for transit investment in Wake County. And we also have the survey, again, that's been open since January. We hope you've taken that, and we'll encourage you to do so tonight as well. So, the case has been made many times over the years for transit in Wake County. You've got your simple growth projections. We're growing about 26,000 people a year, about 61, 62 people a day, and have been continuing that growth for quite a while now. We're also seeing that there's aspects of the population based just on demographics and where people are locating and what sort of lifestyles they're looking for, that the growth trends in transit are actually going a little bit faster, growing a little bit faster than our population overall. That doesn't mean that it's an easy sell for our community or an easy thing for us to just transition to, to have more people use transit. But we do have the demand growing with the population and even faster than population. Some of that's related to the fact that we look at time differently, a little bit differently when we're driving, because we have mobile devices, you know, laptops and cell phones, because if you're in a transit vehicle, you can possibly use that time to work or communicate or whatever versus being driving. We have been studying transit planning here for a number of years, decades at this point. The primarily kickoff, most people reference would be the 1996 timeframe when we gave Triangle Transit the authority for the vehicle registration fee. And been trying to figure out what the right fit for this community is in far as major transit investment for many years. That all culminated in the draft plan, and that's what I'll reference it as, is in this plan. And again, you know, Kendra referenced it as the original plan. But essentially, what that is, is that's the reaction document that we created a couple years ago. And in general, where we got to is that, yeah, it gave us a lot of things. There's a lot of stuff that we can get out of it, but it wasn't the right fit for our community. And so, we've decided to go back and say, how are we going to form the right fit plan for our community? And just to be clear, the reason we come out to all of y'all is that there's a, the state legislature has given us the ability to go after a half-cent sales tax for transit. And so, that would be the impetus behind where the county commissioner gets involved and where I get involved, is that they would have the authority to put that on the ballot and have a referendum to see if Wake County citizens wanted to tax themselves for transit. And we're trying to find the right investment vehicle to support that sort of initiative. So, this conversation is going to be different because it's going to be community-driven. We're asking a lot of questions differently than we have in the past. In the past, we've essentially said, well, let's figure out what some of the best first investments would be and then go out and sell them to the community. What we're doing on this plan is we're going to say, let's make sure that we understand that the community has a better understanding of what transit can be and what it can do for our community and how it works generally. So, we're going to be talking about the network. We're going to be talking about certain characteristics about how transit works, and I'll come back to those in a second. But you'll hear the word "trade-offs" used. Well, you'll hear me use, you know, "market." You'll hear me, you know, use more words that are related to a lot of the other investments we make, rather than this is something that occurs just in a vacuum. And that's intentional on our part. We want to make sure that we understand that this is something, that we have a choice in how we invest, and we want to do it in our way. So, the first thing I'm going to talk about is that there's a connected network. This is a picture. We have an advisory committee where they were working in a fictitious community, but the different dots of density represent different areas that they need to connect. And as you can see, it wasn't just a matter of building one line and saying, well, there is done. It was actually trying to create a network. And the network gives you the possibility of going various different places based on your route. And if you think about where you go on a daily basis, you very rarely, you may for your work trip, go back and forth between one location. But in other times, you want to go various different locations, and that's where the network becomes very important. We also wanted to look at vehicle frequency. We have two consultants working on this plan with us. One is Kim Lee Horn, which is a local engineering firm, and the other is Jarrett Walker and Associates. Jarrett Walker's been working on the techniques that he's taking us through. And one of the things he's talking about is vehicle frequency. And the phrase he uses is, vehicle frequency is like a gate across your driveway that says you can only leave your house when that gate is open. This is a picture of essentially the existing transit network that we have. And the red represents the gate opening every 15 minutes. The blue represents the gate opening every 30 minutes, and the green represents when we're opening, when it opens only every hour. And if you think about how that impacts your, how well you would be able to get to things you need to get to and how it directly relates to our ridership, this is our existing system shown with those peak frequencies or with those frequencies. So, you can see that we have a lot of our network in our services. The frequency has been shown nationally to be, and internationally to be, so important that many people are actually branding their frequent network and essentially saying, these are the places where you can really not look at schedules and just expect the buses to be there or that the vehicles to be there. So, the next thing we're going to get into is trade-offs. And I'll cover these in a little bit, but it's going to be essentially ridership versus coverage and then capital versus operating. The Transit Choices Report, which has, again, been out for a while, is essentially a documentation piece that doesn't make decisions. It essentially is framing where we're at and what we should be thinking about as we make decisions. So, it's a common starting point for our community conversation. The Choices Report is written conversationally. So, instead of saying, here's the base data, you basically have things like, how did we get here? What we know now? The transit toolbox, and then our transit choices, which, again, I'll cover in a second. We have a number of maps in there, and they each tell you to do different things as it's related to what we might need to touch and might need to connect with our transit network. This is a map of population density. Again, I think the important takeaway from this is that you're looking at a network. There's not just one line that you could draw in here and connect all our important areas, but actually, there's numerous areas that we need to be connecting. The same thing is reflected on our employment density and our existing ridership. The big area around NCSU is actually the Wolf Line service where they do have those frequencies. You can also see, based on the map I showed you before, where those red lines are, both Capital and New Bern are actually showing more ridership as well. This is another thing that Transit Choices Report does, is essentially compares us to other areas. In some ways, we can say, yeah, we're successful. We're competing with some of our other communities, but they're not necessarily the communities that we aspire to be more like. So, if you compare yourself to some of the communities that we would like to be more like, we definitely are underfunding transit services in some ways. And I think one of the things we want to be very particular about is it's pretty easy for us to increase transit abundance. That's essentially the amount of service we provide by person. You just add more funding. But we also want to increase the relevance, which is basically the transit trips per person as well. We know that walkability is an extremely important concern. If you look at these two areas, if you think about the dot being the place where you're dropped off the transit vehicle, if you have a network in the more gridded area, you can access more stops. If you're in a place that has more cul-de-sacs, which we have a lot about, and again, honesty is another one of those terms that we'll be using, we have some challenges about the number of places you can reach and with that last mile of service. The Choices Report also identifies a number of things in the Transit Choice Toolbox, which identifies how transit actually functions. One of the elements of that is that there is a ridership recipe. If we want to go after higher ridership, and again, that's, we are not assuming that we do, right? But it is one of the things that we hear often, is that people say, well, why would we invest in buses if, when I see the buses today, they're empty all the time, right? If we wanted to say, well, one of our goals is to make sure that they're empty as little of the time as possible, you want to go after higher ridership areas. And there's two ways to essentially do that. You create commuter express services that bypass congestion and go into dense employment areas. The other is that you're going to go in the areas that are already ready for transit. And so, you're going to have some difficulty applying it in some of these newer areas. We also explore transit technologies. We have our base local bus. We have what we're calling Bus Rapid Transit. It's going to be a bill of services that are essentially saying there are capital improvements into bus line services. What that means is that they might be places where you would add a lane or add a new bridge or something to make that connection, or even just adjust the signal so that the buses don't stop as much. We also have the light rail component, which is essentially a lighter rail vehicle. We have the express buses, which are on the commuter services. And then, we have the commuter rail. We're also adding a new technology option, which Mayor Sears and the advisory committee members will look at tomorrow as well, which is where you're pushing some of those commuter rail services up into the local frequent services and seeing if that's a product that we want to consider as well. So, our choices, as identified by the Transit Choice Report, are going to be ridership versus coverage and capital versus operating. The ridership goal, and again, most of these are a spectrum when we talk about them, is a matter of, you can do a little bit of both, but the more you do of one, the less you can do of the other. So, when you think about ridership, it's think like a business. Essentially, you go where the customers are. You know, if you were starting a restaurant, you can decide, well, I'm just going to locate over here and I'm sure everybody will find me. Or you can say, here, I understand my market. Here's where I'm going after. This is what I'm going to do. The ridership goal would say, you're going to locate where your market is. The coverage goal, and we have to be very honest about this with transit, is that we know that it's been expected that it's going to provide some level of access for all. And so, when you look at those empty buses, that's, in some cases, what it's doing. It's intentionally providing that lifeline service to those areas, and what we need to do is be, again, honest in how much of that we want to do. So, what we're wanting to do is we want to work with the community to understand where we need to be on that spectrum between ridership and coverage. The next choice we have is basically capital, which is basically to invest, to make transit look, feel, and operate differently, right? So, one of the things we hear when people say, I want light rail in this community, is they're very interested in these capital and projects that would actually make transit different than what we have on today. And then, we have the operating goal, which is deliver service as soon as possible. When you look at those frequencies and you say, well, I wouldn't, you know, take a service that only leaves every hour. It just doesn't work for my lifestyle. The easiest way to increase that service is just to add more vehicles on the road as soon as possible. So, as we move forward, establishing our future direction, we've mentioned the terminology and vocabulary that I mentioned today. That will continue through the entire process. That's not going to change. We're just going to continue to say, this is how we're going to assess our investment options. We're going to be using a 78-member advisory committee, which your mayor and Kendra's working with, and we also have one citizen as well, to help us delve into these details so that we all don't have to, but they'll be getting into the levels of detail with this stuff and trying to come up with an idea of what the right directions for us to set are. As you can see by the advisory committee, we have, it's fairly representational of a number of different groups, and that's intentionally so. And then, we're going to be not developing with this group just the final solution and bringing it out to you and saying, do you like it or do you not like it? It's essentially, we're going to be developing four scenarios that say how we could potentially invest in this area. And we're not going to have to choose one of those. We're going to be able to cherry pick, you know, the best ideas from them and say, I like this about this, and essentially moving that to the final plan. And we expect to be working with those scenarios starting in May and sharing those with the public over the summer. So, the scenarios are going to relate to the terminology and vocabulary that I talked about today with the ridership and the coverage and the operating and the infrastructure. So, again, this basically is saying that we're working through the summer on the Expanded Choices Report and on that schedule. With that, I will turn it over to you all to ask any questions about what's going on.
Questions or comments, Tim?
Mayor, there was an article in the paper today about, there was a request for added funds, a couple hundred thousand dollars more for more parts of the studies. Is that part of this four options that you're talking about?
Yes.
How is that, how is it different from the, why do they need the extra money?
So, the biggest issue with the additional money, so about $88,000 of it, of the $100,000 that was added, is related to the fact that when we originally rolled this out, we said, okay, we're going to bring on a consultant to do these services, to do this bill of goods, this work that we want done. And they came back to us and said, yeah, we can do that work, but we don't have the resources within the budget you've given us to sell it, to basically take it around to your public and make sure that they're following along on this. And that is an extremely important part of this process, right? And so, what we've done is we've said, okay, well, let's go ahead. And just through our partnerships, we have on this, and I've added a slide in the new stuff, but basically, we've got, you know, Go Triangle, City of Raleigh, Campo, Town of Cary, RDU, RTP, and Wake County funding this. And so, with the partnership, we essentially said, well, let's go ahead and take on these costs and make sure we sell it correctly. And this meeting is part of that conversation, right? That's why I'm out here today. When we got back together and said, we're going to need additional scope on some of these things related to the fact that we're lengthening the schedule, and that's based on the fact that we have more time to consider this based on when we're likely to go to referendum for the half-cent sales tax. And we want to make sure that everybody on our partnership, and we've gotten agreement through our staff level, that there's not a reason to rush this through and say, we have to have this decision by next week. This is a very important decision, so we wanted to have more time with that. When we have that more time, we said, okay, let's go ahead and include those costs. They were outside the original scope, in the scope that the county is counting on and we're actually budgeting for. And that's what's coming out of that budget request, is that we're actually incorporating those costs that were not included in the original, but it's not really as much of a big, it's not like the consultants come back and said, I need double the money to finish this project.
It seemed like a lot of money, that's what.
It's, it is definitely a lot of money. And what we're running to is that we really want to get that engagement through there. And so, you have things where you say, well, how long will it take? We have to keep this open? How many meetings do we have to do? How many copies of this do we have to produce? And so, when you're doing, trying to do outreach for a million people, it gets to those levels of.
To follow up on that, why wasn't it included in the first go-around?
So, the original stuff was essentially saying that we wanted to, we knew we needed to revisit some things to find the right fit for our community, but we wanted to make sure we maintain the maximum number of options as far as when the county commissioners might feel like it was the right time to take it to the public, right? So, we had an opportunity to go to referendum, essentially. And so when you're doing, trying to do outreach for a million people, it gets to those levels of.
To follow up on that, why wasn't it included in the first go-around?
So the original stuff was essentially saying that we wanted to, we knew we needed to revisit some things to find the right fit for our community, but we wanted to make sure we maintain the maximum number of options as far as when the county commissioners might feel like it was the right time to take it to the public, right? So we had an opportunity to go to referendum essentially every year. So you could go in 2015, you could go in 2016, you could go in 2013, 2014. And what we wanted to do is we wanted to design a process that allowed us to do 2015, if we wanted to, which would be November 2015, right? And as we got into it, we worked with the advisory committee and said, here's what we're going to do. We take on this fact that we're going to look at this vocabulary, we're going to look at it in this way. Everybody's saying, it just doesn't feel right. And we don't know why, you know, we haven't, we know we want to do this, we feel like there's something there, but we want to make sure we do it, just like every investment we make. We want to make sure that we have the right investment, right? And that we have something that's actually telling the right story to our community and is putting this in the right light for what it really is going to mean to our people. And so we said, it's just going to take longer. And that's where it comes back and says, so it was kind of, let's hurry up and get it done at the beginning. And then when we got into it, we said, let's take the right amount of time.
Did y'all bid on this? Is it a bidding process for this?
There was, there was definitely, in the original contract, there was, and with the selection of this process, we definitely went through a, you know, full RFP on this and it was open to follow-up.
Follow-up on that, was there, wasn't, was there an end date on the original contract? Or is that what you're basically extending to take more time?
That's correct.
There was an end date and you're going to be going past that?
That's right. And again, it's all related to the fact that the consultants say, yeah, we can get it done on the original timeframe. The problem is, is it moves where we're bringing the advisory committee together, asking them to get into this information and then make a decision the next day, and then rolling out to the public and doing that same sort of schedule. And this is a very important decision for our community. We just don't feel like that's the right schedule.
Other questions or comments? Just so everybody knows, the Holly Springs are tech, and I think Kendra brought it up a little bit ago. We've been talking about the need for bus service here for a long, long time. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I think we're going to get it, okay? So that's the good news for Holly Springs. And we're, you know that. We're working on that with you, Tim, too.
Holly Springs before was not included much in that whole process. And I do, I would like to see Holly Springs really included in this.
The first plan that came out, that red line didn't come all the way down to Holly Springs, but our committee, when we did our, our table should have won that, I think. We have a bus line coming to Holly Springs, so that's the one we're going to vote for, Campo. Just want to forewarn you, Tim. You knew that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dick. Can you finish?
Go ahead.
Some of those tables you have in there, how old are they?
Which, which tables?
Tables where they show population and if you haven't heard.
Those are actually fairly recent tables, so they actually are still showing our projections.
I saw some of the, Holly Springs looks like a very small area there relative to density. And we're really.
That was, that was per, that was on the square mile.
Yeah, and I think that's a very important conversation for this community to have, is when you, we have essentially two dual issues in Holly Springs. As you develop your density, you're definitely going to become a better transit area, right? You have, in some cases, there's people that are not selecting Holly Springs because of your, you're basically the availability of transit.
Lack of.
Right. And so to some extent, we know that there's going to be a coverage aspect of the lines that we're going to be putting in this area early on, at least. But we definitely want to work with all our communities as you figure out what exactly the right development pattern is for you, that we have an ability to support that to the extent that we need to. But then the other factor is that there is a distance involved in it. And, you know, when you drive Holly Springs Road and you drive the other communities, there's lots of land in there that there's not, there's not ridership in that area, right? And so that's an extreme challenge for providing transit. That doesn't mean you can't do some of the connections that we've talked about in the previous plan, and that's where I don't have a problem with what the mayor is essentially saying and coming back and direct rebuttal. It's the right level. And that's one of the things that we want to be making sure that you all are understanding, is we're not telling you, we don't want to work with you to make this happen. What we're saying is, we, you need to understand that what we are trying to do is rationalize how this investment goes. And if you, one of the goals you have is that you want to be able to say, well, if we provide these services, we want to be able to maximize the amount that is user fee covered, there's certain places we can run those lines, right? And I think that's where what we're trying to do is we don't, we don't abandon our core values based on saying, well, we need this level. But that doesn't, again, come back and say, we can't provide those base levels based on coverage. We just need to understand that's why we did that.
And I think a lot of people that work in RTP, in particular, or Raleigh, they have to go all the way into Apex to even catch a bus.
Right.
And then it's limited in those areas right there. So having some kind of a closer center point here in Holly Springs where our people can get to, rather than having to go to Apex or go into Fuquay or whatever the town is they go into, but, and, you know, that is a long, I don't think Fuquay has any, I'm not sure, but.
What's that?
I know Apex has stops for transit.
They do, but their services today are very complicated to ride.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Good answer. Good answer.
Yes, very complicated. I'm saying this, I know my husband rides.
Right.
He goes all the way out there.
Yeah, and we.
If he drives out, it's 45 minutes there, 45 minutes. If he, if he goes into Apex and we have neighbors that do the same, it's still another 20 minutes, 25 minutes to get to the bus where they catch the bus and then go on the RTP.
Right.
I'd like to see more, a more, closer stops here in the Holly Springs area for our Holly Springs people.
That's, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
A bus service stop in Holly Springs.
It's horrendous to go from Holly Springs to Apex, you know, because you have to go through all these narrow streets and narrow roads and a lot of traffic.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Tim, for coming. I'll see you tomorrow morning, right, in Raleigh.
Taking the bus.
Taking the bus. My little bus. Item 8A, consent agenda, Mayor Pretten.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
One made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Item 9A, new business.
Excuse us.
What?
He's talking to him. I don't think he's talking to us.
Could we?
Shh. Take it out to the hallway.
Could we maintain our conversation quietly, please? Item 9A, new business, 13 DPO2 A01, North Main Athletic Complex, Phase 1 Amendment. Laura Holloman and Lynn Bradley.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So as everyone knows, or I hope they know, if not, they really need to get out more.
Good line.
The North Maine, the North Main Athletic Complex has been steadily moving through the construction process. And of course, that's situated between North Main Street and GB Alfred Highway. And with the soccer, the soccer fields, the tennis complex, and of course, the multi-sport stadium, it's no surprise that it will be outfitted with athletic field lighting suitable for tournament-level play. When the North Main Athletic Development Plan was originally submitted and approved by town council, it was done so with the understanding, had a condition of approval saying that at such time the athletic field lighting was finalized, it would come back to town council for discussion and approval. Because, the reason why it does that through a waiver process is actually built into our unified development ordinance, is the possibility to increase maximum light levels at property lines for athletic field lighting for the purposes of tournament-level play so long as a waiver is requested and approved by town council. So consequently, there has been a waiver submitted to increase the maximum light levels along the eastern property lines, which is along this area. And that's the only area along the North Main Athletic Complex where the maximum light levels exceed what is allowed. So along this area adjacent to Oak Hall, we have a 0.0 maximum light level there, as well as along the bypass area. So I think that's important to note, is that was part of the reasoning for why the athletic complex was designed the way it was, was to kind of minimize adverse impacts for adjacent residences. So along here, where you've got the vacant Wake County land above here, and of course, beyond is Easton Acres, and then Oak Hall, there will be no carryover light pollution that us calculated, shown here. So that is the request before you tonight. If you have any questions specifically about the lighting fixtures, I'm sure Lynn can entertain it. We'll tell you that it's the same lighting that was installed when Wumble Park did their improvements. So they've got their shield protectors there, which is pretty standard at this, at this day and age with technology. And of course, our UDO requires all lights to be shut off within an hour of the event ending.
Any questions, Laura or Lynn?
So the lighting that we initially said isn't enough, when you say tournament play, we're just talking on the all sports stadium, right?
On the all sports stadium, as well as, as well as the soccer fields.
Soccer field.
All right, so in, over there, there'll be, but not facing Oak Hall?
Correct.
Other questions or comments? There's several of these, and we'll go through them. Anything else? Okay. There'll be two motions.
I'll make the motion to approve and make and accept the finding of the fact to be recorded in the minutes for the, for UDO Section 7.02 BE Lighting Standards Special Regulations to allow for a waiver of the regulations that would result in increase in maximum light levels allowed at the property line in association with the development plan 13 DP 02 A01, as stated on the screen.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Again, I'll make the motion to approve a waiver of regulation of UDO Section 7.02 BE Lighting Standards Special Regulations to allow for a waiver of the regulations that would result in an increase in maximum light levels allowed at the property line in association with Development Plan 13 DP 02 A01.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you on that one, Laura. Item 9B, new business, 15 MAS 01, Kensington Place subdivision, Sean Ryan. And Elizabeth? No. Sean Ryan.
We'll call her up if we need her.
If we need it, right. Oh, I see you hiding back there. Go ahead, Sean.
All right. The item before you tonight is a preliminary plan for an 18-lot subdivision known as Kensington Place. This property is located at 4400 Sunset Lake Road, directly adjacent to Heritage Meadows Lane and Sunset Lake Road. The zoning of this property is R-10. And if you recall, it was just a couple of months ago that this went through the rezoning process for that zoning district. The proposal is for an 18-lot, single-family subdivision. The R-10 zoning district allows for a density of 3.25 units per acre, and this subdivision is proposing a density of 3.08 units per acre, so it is within the maximum density allowed. The minimum lot area in R-10 is 10,000 square feet. And as you can see down here in the corner, they are meeting that minimum lot size and exceeding it on most of the other lots in the subdivision. There will be a 50-foot thoroughfare buffer along Sunset Lake Road, and then a 5-foot perimeter buffer along the perimeter edge of the subdivision. This is the proposed landscaping plan. This is an A20 opaque, or excuse me, A20 open buffer along the perimeter of the subdivision. And so that'll include deciduous trees mainly. There is a B225 thoroughfare buffer up along Sunset Lake Road, and that is a semi-opaque buffer, so it's a mixture of evergreens and deciduous trees. And there will also be a berm along Sunset Lake Road as well. And then, of course, there are street trees provided up, up and down the street, meeting our street tree requirement. They're providing three street trees, which is more than, a larger variety than what we would normally require, so that's good for biodiversity. And of course, they will have that street tree protection along the sidewalk to help protect the sidewalk. Planning Board heard this last month, and they recommended approval with conditions. And I will point out, let's see here, this is Heritage Meadows Lane along the south side of, or the east side, excuse me, of the property. This is a private easement that provides access to a private subdivision down at the back of the road. Part of the neighborhood meeting that took place with the rezoning, the neighbors had requested that a fence be installed along that side of the easement to provide them some privacy. The applicant has decided to provide that six-foot fence. The planning board was concerned that, being on an individual property, that the fence might fall into disrepair, so they had recommended a condition of approval that that fence be maintained by the HOA. And so you will see that condition added at the end of the recommended approval.
Is Heritage Meadows, is that not a dirt road?
It is a dirt road, and the applicant can confirm when they come up, but I believe that they have some sort of arrangement with the owners of that easement to realign that road, because it does cross over slightly onto this property.
In, in these plans like this, does, do we have a mailbox kiosk-type requirement that?
Yes.
Didn't see it.
Yes, they did get approval from the postmaster. They will have one centralized mailbox location. It'll be located on their open space lot. It's reserved for a BMP, but then right behind the sidewalk will be that centralized mailbox kiosk location.
I didn't see it either. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Good question on this, too. One way in, one way out.
I'll invite Elizabeth up to answer that real quick.
You knew that question was going to come up.
It's going to extend, yeah.
For safety reasons, I think that's, would be problematic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, this is a standard residential street width, and it is one way in, one way out. It meets our requirements for length of cul-de-sac, and so it's not exceeding that length, and then has the turnaround down here, which gives our fire and various vehicles an opportunity to turn around. What I know has also been asked is, we generally try and stub adjacent properties whenever possible. And so there is right-of-way stubbed here at the end of this cul-de-sac so that we can interconnect in the future. At this time, there's a house sitting on this lot, so we do not know when or when that might occur, but it's available if that redevelops and some other arrangements there, we can connect and tie it in to Newberry Park, I believe also connects to the backside of Heritage Meadows. So there's some opportunity for interconnections with this in the future.
Is there another area right over here toward, is that dotted line toward the front of the subdivision?
This is an easement, if this is the one you were, that one's an easement for utilities. I believe it's sewer in this case. Any other questions?
Other questions, Elizabeth? Seeing none? Thank you, Elizabeth. Any more from Sean?
The applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Have him come up.
I'll invite the applicant to come up, please.
Need your name, address, and stand by the podium, please, and speak in the mic. Appreciate.
I'm Richard Ladd with Kensington Place, 203 Rutherford Glen Drive, Cary.
Okay.
I want to compliment the staff for early interaction on this project from the very beginning on connectivity to the, to the rear, which we've done. We've also connected, proposed connected, the sewer to extend up to Heritage Meadows. During our neighborhood meeting, there was concern about having any connectivity to Heritage Meadows, which we, which we said we wouldn't do. They also required a fence. So we had provided that the homeowners or the development would put in the six-foot fence during the development, and that would be maintained by the homeowners' association. So that wouldn't be an individual basis based on each homeowner would have to build the fence, that would be part of the development. So we.
Is this a wooden fence? Wooden?
We have proposed a six-foot wooden fence.
Curious, yeah.
Yeah. And that would be on the, the outside of the landscape buffer.
Okay. Are there questions?
Nope.
Nope. Look, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else for Sean? Who wants to tackle that one?
Motion to approve preliminary plan number 15 MAS 01 for Kensington Place as submitted by EDR Engineering, project number 8584.6, dated 030915, with the following conditions as written on the screen.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9C, new business, 07 DP 14A 04, Green Oaks Business Center Amendment. Laura is back, and Elizabeth is in the wings.
I'm back, and so is this project.
There you go. Been a while, right?
It has been a while.
Yeah.
So this is the site we're talking about, the corner of Green Oaks and Premier Drive, which is known as the existing Green Oaks Business Center. This is the existing flex space building, which hosts Fastenal, RE/MAX is there now as well as Restoration Hardware along Green Oaks Parkway here. This is formerly known as Jump Zone slash Doggy Village, existing 10,000 square foot building there. So currently, the business center together is approximately 25,840 square feet, and the request tonight is to add in a third building, approximately 6,600 square feet, kind of in this northwest corner of the site. Coincidentally enough, some of you who have been on the board for a while, and I think maybe, I think you might have been on the board when this was originally approved, it came, it was originally a part of the original Green Oaks Business Center plans, however, during Doggy Village's time there, they, it was removed during amendment to allow for their outdoor area. So Doggy Village has since moved out, and now the owner is acknowledging that the need is there again. The market has picked up, and their need is there for industrial flex space again, and they've brought it, brought the amendment back to show the building that was once originally there. So this is, of course, to be accessed by the front. They're adding these parking spaces here, as well as in the rear. This is an existing dumpster corral that currently is unused, that was put in originally, but of course, this building will utilize this dumpster. And the parking is meant to be an integrated center parking area, so even though, you know, parking, obviously logically, parking will be here, really, you know, if the need arises for, the parking requirement is meant to be encapsulated by the entire site, is my point. So the parking requirement is 113 spaces on this site, and that's what's provided. That's based on the ultimate square footage out here, which will be 32,440 square feet. They're meeting all the existing setbacks of the site, which is 10-foot, both in the rear and side here. In terms of the landscaping, they are adding the buffer that they're required to do, which is a C-225 in the back, which is the opaque buffer here, because you've got that vacant parcel behind you. And they're required to do an A-20 here, which they're meeting by providing a mixture of evergreen and large shrubs, and of course, the foundation landscaping as required as This is the elevations, proposed elevations. They do match the same colors and materials of the existing buildings that are out there. However, they do go further by meeting the facade modulation requirements, as well as the roof line variation requirements. The current building is kind of straight across now. They actually got a waiver originally, but the current owners wanted to meet the current standards and have built this building to meet all current UDO requirements. Any questions of me? The applicant is also here.
Questions of Laura this time?
Planning Board did recommend approval. They, of course, liked that the minute was adding back the original building. They did ask if the building was planned to be industrial flex space, and it is planned to be that. But if you have any further questions, of course, the applicant is here.
Laura, I've got a quick question for you.
Yes.
In the packet that we've got, one of the notes was that there was some discussion points with staff and planning board potentially about the color of the materials and the potential waiver.
Yes, that, and that was between, when the planning board packet was created, that was met, so the waiver was no longer necessary.
It wasn't one of the discussion points.
That's correct.
And I think everybody knows, Doggy Village is still in business, correct? They just moved.
They're in Apex.
Yeah.
As you go in, as you go into town, as you turn on to William Street there.
Yep. Okay. Other questions, Laura, at this point? Any reason for the applicant to come forward? No?
No reason.
Think we're all good. The applicant here, raise your hand.
Was before.
Thank you. Alright.
Motion to approve preliminary plan 07 DP 14A 04 for Green Oaks Business Center, excuse me, as submitted by DHM Design, project number 15018, dated 03092015, with the following conditions. All previous approval conditions for Green Oaks Business Center will apply to this plan amendment, and fee in lieu of upgrade will be required for this project for the pump station and/or force main.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Item 9D, new business, NIMAC, Phase 2 TA Loving Change Order, request for second set of bathroom facilities. We've talked about this, and now catch us up to date, Lynn.
Okay, last meeting, at the time, we had an amount of what the restrooms were going to cost, but we didn't have the change order.
Right.
Tonight, I think you've got, should have change order in your packet, change order in the amount of $379,654. Again, that's part of the additions that we'll be able to provide because of the million-dollar Wake County grant. Give you an update on the grant. I believe we have a draft in Town Hall, and we're working on that at this time.
We're still expecting that to come through. That's the one we're talking about. We talked about it two meetings ago, maybe, about the Wake County Commissioners granting us a million dollars. Right, Dan? And so that's good. Questions, Lynn, on this?
Yeah, I do have a question. We have two sets of restrooms. Can you give us an update on what that entails? Is it, how many stalls in each one?
There are about 18 fixtures in each one of the restrooms. So we have four total restrooms.
Okay.
Two men's, two women's, and there are 15 to 18 fixtures in each one. Yes.
Other questions, Lynn?
You're getting the money's worth, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is an important part of the project, too.
It is.
It's necessary.
Especially on Thursday, Thursday.
Yes, right.
It is.
Other questions, Lynn?
No, sir.
Alright. Click, click. Anything else, Lynn, on this one?
No, that's all.
Okay. Go.
I'll make the motion to approve construction contract change order 025 from TA Loving in the amount of $379,654 for a second set of bathroom facilities in the North Main Athletic Complex project.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. By the way, this is a added point. TA Loving is doing a, we think, right, real good job out there. We're happy with that. 9E, new business, Utley Water Reclamation Facility, permit modification, Kendra Parish.
As you know, Holly Springs is currently evaluating wastewater treatment options for the growing demand, and while continuing to be fiscally responsible to the citizens, over the last year, the town initiated our, it's the State Environmental Policy Act revision to our environmental assessment, which will, currently, our permit for the wastewater plant has us discharging down past Green Tree Reservoir, which is close to the Hair Slate. And through a lot of modeling, water quality modeling, testing, analysis over the last year, it is apparent that we could leave that discharge where it currently sits on the property at the current wastewater plant. And so we've been stepping through that with the state and all the different reviews. We currently are in the last part of the clearinghouse review. It went out to the public, and we are expecting a FONZI, which is an acronym for Finding of No Significant Impact. That is expected May 1st, and once we have that in hand, we then can go to the state and get our permit modified to close the loop where it says we can leave our discharge on-site at the wastewater plant. So all that saying, it's about 20 million-plus savings for the town, and definitely worthwhile. So once that comes into play, we will then have to submit for a permit modification. We also will go through a series of meetings with the state, and then we will be submitting construction drawings. There's a couple of pieces of equipment at the plant that have to be increased in size and modified, and so we'll be submitting those construction drawings and getting approval and moving forward. Once all that's complete, we will be permitted to treat and discharge 6 million gallons a day, with an option to, at some point, we could expand up to 8 million gallons a day. What's attached tonight is a proposal from CH2M Hill, and they will be providing the professional services to do the permit modification, as well as all the meetings that go along with that permit modification. The amount of the contract is $41,950, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
That's coming from Sewer Reserves, correct?
All this will be from Sewer Reserves, that's correct.
Questions?
You stole my question.
Comments?
You stole my question.
Oh, darn. Well, ask it again. Anything else?
We're going to save $20 million ultimately getting this work through. It will be money's well spent.
Yes.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes the savings doesn't come across as strongly to some people as the amount of 41,950, but that's a good point to make. Thank you very much.
Kendra, what's our discharge now? What are we averaging?
We are currently around, I think, 2.4. Our current permit is for 2.4, and we're right there at it, which is why we were pursuing this.
Alright.
Okay.
So I want to tackle a motion. Where'd it go?
I'm sorry.
There it is.
Motion to enter into an agreement with CH2M Hill in the amount of $41,950 for professional services for the permit modification.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you, Kendra.
Item 9F, new business, open seat on the Park and Rec Advisory Committee. What happened here?
Making a lot of noise.
Get a little nervous, Adam?
Now you know why I call him Shorty, and he calls me Stretch.
I can't help it. As you know, the Parks and Rec-
Go, Alan.
I'm sorry. As you know, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has nine members who meet the second Thursday of every month. Last month, we had a board member, Daniel Price, who has a term ending on June 30th, 2017, resigned to relocate his family to Wilmington, North Carolina. So tonight, we have three new applicants, David Kegel, James Edick, and Howard Slinkard. We ask that you review their resumes and choose one for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
We have to do two motions tonight, one to accept the resignation and two, the new. Let's hear some ideas.
I mean, let's dispense with the motion to accept Daniel Price's resignation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Go ahead.
I did.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now?
I would like to make a nomination for Howard Slinkard. I think he's been very active in the community relative to asking questions, and I think he would be an asset to that board.
He seems very willing to come forward.
He's a nice guy.
Are we consensus on this?
I think he'll do a good job, huh?
I would agree.
Alright, we're consensus. Want to make a motion?
Yeah, make the motion to appoint Howard Slinkard to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good job.
It's a good candidate.
Yes, yes. I think we're all-
Howard's a very nice, he's very good.
But yeah, and I mean, I think they were all really, really good, but-
Yeah, but Howard's been really active in the community.
Item 9G, new business, Main Street Extension Duke relocation, relocation. I have agreement, hello. Town of Holly Springs, 8.035, Kendra, and there is a request. Go.
Before Mrs. Parish starts, although I don't own 10% of Duke Energy nor otherwise, then to get compensated for a decision on this, to eliminate any appearance of impropriety, I'll ask to be recused from this deliberation.
Just need a motion to recuse.
Yep. Motion to recuse. You're a second?
Second.
You're accused. Thank you, Hank. We'll call you back.
So I want to take the opportunity to give you an update on the Main Street Extension project, and then we'll move into the services contract that's before you tonight. But basically, the Main Street Extension project, this is the project that the town has been working on for a few years. We were first, for a few, that's the understatement in it.
It's been a while, but-
It's been a while.
It's very important.
The beauty of this story is that the town is only paying 20 cent on the dollar, and DOT is, and the federal government are paying 80% of this project. The reason it's been a while is we had to apply for a design contract, or design grant, had to get designed, then the next year, we applied for right-of-way, following year, we applied for construction dollars, and all this is coming through the federal government with lots of hoops and red tape, but then again, it is 80% grant funded. So we've moved through all these steps, and we are looking to advertise in the next month or so for this project. DOT let us know that the last finishing touch is on the authorization to construct should be coming our way, and once this project gets started, it will effectively be taking about a third of the traffic off Avant Ferry Road between Pine Grove and the bypass. So this, again, is one of the tools in the toolbox that's going to help the Avant Ferry situation. What's before you tonight is a Duke Progress contract. As with any kind of road projects, as you see overhead utility lines and underground, they are in conflict with road widening, so we have to have those relocated. And through, there's some parts of it that is on their dime, and more so that's on federal government's dime. So what's before you tonight is the contract to go ahead and allow Duke to start relocating their infrastructure.
Right.
And the total amount is $449,474.20. That is going to be 80% also funded by DOT. And I can answer any questions.
Just to remind everybody, we recognize the traffic issues on Avant Ferry Road have for some time, and this is just another step in helping that situation. I think you call it the hotspot traffic place.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Questions of Kendra?
Just one curiosity.
Go ahead, you probably asked the same one.
One curiosity I've got, will any of these relocated facilities, will they be underground, or will they be just put back the way they were, or just farther out?
The majority of these will be underground. There will still be, I think there's three or four laterals that remain overhead, but for the most part, it will be underground facilities. And we actually looked at doing overhead versus underground, and the cost savings to do overhead was not that much, and by the time we had to get additional easements for the guy wires and whatnot, it was actually looking quite equivalent to this. So we thought it would look better to get as much as we could underground.
Remove clutter and things of that nature.
Exactly. And this is a gateway. It's our southern gateway. It's trying to, you know, make it look as pretty as possible.
Thank you.
Kendra, I just have a question about the, in our documents, we show the total cost to be $607,000, and this is for $449,000. What's?
It's the motion, yeah, the correct amount is the 449 in the motion.
Not in the-
Not up in the text. Yeah, I'm not sure what that is.
The 449 is the correct number.
Yeah, that's-
Which is the correct number?
449. 449. Yeah, what's down in the motion.
Yeah, I know, I see that, but I'm seeing what we're giving us.
No, that's-
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No? Good. Go.
Motion to enter into an agreement with the Duke Energy Progress in the amount of $449,000.
four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents for relocation of installation of the new facilities for the Main Street Extension project.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to?
To re-admit Councilman Hank Dixon.
Your second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Call him back.
Mike Strick?
Thank you, Kendra. Agenda item nine H, new business, NIMAC, Phase Two Bids Received for Modular Office Building. Land again. Yes, we need this.
Yes. During negotiations with the Coast Plain League Enterprise, office space was negotiated into the agreement. In order to provide that office space, we need a temporary office facility that we can locate on the site. The, the request or, or the office building is going to require about twenty-two hundred square feet, actually, a little bit less than that, because part of the, part of the unit is also going to have two extra offices, and it's going to have additional public restrooms that are going to be located, the building will be located by the tennis courts, that'll be much closer than the restrooms that are in the stadium, and be much more accommodating than people having to walk up there, and easier when there's events going on in the stadium itself. So a few weeks ago, we advertised for bids for twenty-two hundred square foot modular office unit. Bids ranged from a hundred and four to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Lowest bidder is Modular Solutions Incorporated, our North Carolina company. I'm told that they can have the building on site and have it set up prior to opening of the facility.
Opening is when again?
Opening is twenty-eighth of May.
Twenty-eighth of May?
Where's, where's it going to be situated on the, in relation?
There, there is a pad adjacent to the tennis courts for a future building, for a future building site to go, to supplement.
Where they're taking the dirt out right now?
Very close to there, yes. Yes, sir.
Other, oh, funding, coming from?
Will come from contingencies for Phase Two.
Which is part of the?
Stadium project.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
It's a temporary building, right?
It is temporary, and it's anticipated that once the convocation center, once we're able to get that facility up and going, that the office space will be moved to that facility.
Yeah.
Permanently.
Other questions or comments, Lynn?
And, and when it is moved, that modular will still remain ours.
It still will remain ours, and we will be able to utilize that at other sites.
Okay. Great.
Okay? We good? Click. Thank you.
Motion to award a bid to low bidder, Modular Solutions, Inc., for one oh four thousand three hundred for a modular office building at North Main Athletic Complex.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item went to the consent agenda, Agenda Item nine A, new business, NIMAC scoreboard. You taking that one, Lynn?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please.
Just one second.
Don't worry.
Okay. Current Phase Two budget has a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in, in the budget for scoreboard. This scoreboard that we had priced for, for that amount was a picture board, but not a video board, smaller, smaller than we would have liked to have put up. But once, once we got the, the grant from Wake County, we decided that, that we could get a nicer board that would serve our purposes, much better, and would certainly fit in with the, with the stadium and make watching games much more enjoyable than just having a picture board. With that scoreboard also comes sound for the facility. It also comes with turnkey, with all the, all the necessary mixing boards, microphones, portable cameras, and those types of things that you see at many athletic events in the area.
So it's about a hundred and two, a hundred and three thousand dollars more than the original, but that's coming from the grant, our meeting and grant.
The bid, what we're doing is we're, we're getting a bigger board. The, the, the board itself, the entire scoreboard's thirty-six feet long and about twenty feet tall. The video, the video board is about twenty-six feet wide itself and about fifteen feet tall. And the reason the video board makes it, enhances our abilities is because there is no scoreboard, per se, on the board. It's, it's all, it's all.
Electronic.
Electronic, and we can program it for any type scoreboard, for any type athletic event we have in the stadium. So for football, we just program in a football scoreboard, same thing for soccer, lacrosse, or whatever event we have there. So that's going to be quite accommodating to whatever needs we have at that particular time.
Could that be able to be adapted for doing movies?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you can show movies. We've not seen movies on there, on, on there, but we're told that movies will work there very well.
So it's not, in addition to the, to the one seventy-seven, this is a different amount, right?
Yes, the, 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 the new, the new, the new board price and installation through change order with TA Loving is two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, seven, seven eighty-one dollars.
And the one seventy-seven is included in that?
The one seventy-seven is included in that. The Salamanders Baseball Club has committed twenty-four thousand dollars to go towards that video board, which makes the town's added.
Seventy-nine or eighty?
To be.
Ninety-eight, seven, seven eighty-one.
Yes. Thank you.
Got it. I was trying to reconcile the two ninety-nine and the two seventy-five, but the twenty-four is coming from the Salamanders, so we're, we're basically spending basically ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars from the Wake County.
Grant money.
That's correct. That's correct.
From the grant. To improve the board. That's, okay.
Okay.
I got it.
One more question. I don't think this would ever happen, but it could. What if we didn't have electricity? How would, and we had a game going on, what would we, how would we score?
Stop the game.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Game, you don't have to.
But it's the same as any, any sporting event, any place would.
I'm sorry.
It would not be a, you wouldn't have the electronic. You would just get out your pencil and paper.
We wouldn't have lights. I don't, I don't think we'd have.
The lights wouldn't, if it's a day game, wouldn't matter.
That's right.
But, you know, you just take out your pencil and paper, right? So it's.
Yes.
It's only if we have electricity.
That's, that's correct.
Baseball, there's an official score, and the scoreboard is there just for the benefit of the fans, really.
I know.
Unofficial.
Okay.
That's right.
Other questions or comments?
Hey, look, you got to, you got to say it, you know, because somebody's going to say, what happens? You know, what happens if we don't have electricity? What's going to be going on? Why are we spending all this money?
We'll get generators. Oh, never mind. Anything else, Lynn?
No, sir. Unless anybody has any further questions about the project.
All right, we're good. Click, please.
Put the motion up.
Click. Motion up, please.
Got it.
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of the specified Dectronics scoreboard from TA Loving for a price of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, with the town funding of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one of the total.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? We can keep score.
Okay, that's right.
Thank you, Lynn.
As long as there's electricity.
That's right, as long as there's electricity. We'll get one of those squirrels in a cage that, you know, turns around. Never mind. Item ten, other business. I just want to again mention crosswalks, we're getting them back on. Some of you have noticed that, some of you haven't. We're still looking for a couple signs on the crosswalks, but I'm actually seeing people stop, and I really appreciate that, and I think so do the pedestrians who have a propensity to walk across, and sometimes one way good, and sometimes the other way is not so good. So again, keep up the good work on crosswalks, and the anti-bullying campaign is going strong on the twenty-fifth of April. We're going to be over at the Hunt Center having Italian meatballs and Italian cooking chicken, Tony Perna.
Perna.
Is that right, Pete? And come on over, it's not free, but it's close. And anybody needs tickets, Pete's out there right now, and see him before you leave. All right?
Already got them.
I know you did. I told me. And so did you.
Yeah.
Other business?
I got just a, an article that was in the N O, it just sort of speaks to the, the town's infrastructure as far as our broadband, talking about the outages in major towns where fiber optic was cut and it disabled leg staff Arizona for about six hours out there, because they didn't have redundancy, and the town thought ahead with our I T department giving us redundancy in more than one way. So I'm really proud to have that as part of our infrastructure here, that look forward to it, so.
That's Jeff's passion.
Yep.
Jeff, the man, a few words.
Yep, but he has a passion.
He does have a passion.
All right. What else?
Have we checked, I think coming from Fuquay, there's a sign, a road sign that heads you toward Apex, and they don't even mention Holly Springs on that road sign. It's, you know, Holly Spring, I mean, you, I mean, Apex, certain amount of miles, but it doesn't even mention Holly Springs, so it's, could you check and make sure that we're out there on these road signs with DOT?
Sounds like an engineering opportunity.
Where is this? I'm just trying.
On, on the bypass coming from Fuquay.